Good evening and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Will Troop 613 and members of Troop 968 and the three veterans from the United States Marine Corps, please come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You guys might be future Marines someday.
Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Egan?
Here.
Caputa? Caputa, are you here?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Stenit?
Here.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Here.
Seem we have a quorum, I call this meeting to order. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to our meeting of December 9th, 2013? Seeing none, Mr. Grib moves for approval, second by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have a certificate of recognition. Mr. Kyle Ratcho, Mr. Mayor?
Lou, I'd like for you to kind of explain why we're here with this award today a little bit. This is kind of a cow on above and beyond with the health department duties. Why don't you just give us a little recap?
Well, basically Kyle here is one of our part-time kindleman, I guess it is, or what do we call you out there in the field? Kindleman, okay. And he actually started last year. And he was, got called out to round up two pit bulls. And resident saw him round them up without any assistance. In fact, he even told the residents, you know, stay back at a safe distance, you crowd them. And the rest of the story is shortly thereafter, a young mother and baby and a walker dog in a neighborhood could have been a real disaster. You don't often think that a part-time kindleman is going to make our safe, our streets safer. But Kyle, here's an example of other departments besides the police department. I'm going to take a little bit away from them today, but yeah, you know, other than the police department, yeah, we have some folks out there on the street that can do a great job for the city and for our residents in general. So appreciate it, Kyle.
Thank you.[245.12][245.12](Applause).
Kyle, on behalf of a grateful city and a grateful public works department and a grateful mayor, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation for outstanding work and service you performed on October 2013.
Thank you.[264.52][264.52](Applause).
Did you get the picture? Got it? Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a certificate of appreciation to the United States Marine Corps League. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to ask Councilmember Caputa and Hernandez to join me.
We had the Veterans Day Parade last year and we honored the Marine Corps with a birthday cake and a tribute to them on their birthday just happened to be on the day that we had a Veterans Day Parade, which happened to be November 10th. And Mr. Hernandez and Caputa's suggestion, we had a birthday cake and honored the Marine Corps in a special way and they really appreciate it.
Sir, thank you.
I'm Sergeant Cranin with the Marine Corps League 184 here in North County, St. Louis. And what we do briefly is, our old saying is, once Marine, always Marine. Any personnel that has an injury whatsoever, sickness, illness, whatever, we donate money to, give money to the family. The way we do it, we're nonprofit. We sell hot dogs, bratwursts and things of that nature, t-shirts, covers, whatever we can get. And we want to thank the city of Florissant for inviting us to partake in their festival. Fall Festival was outstanding, the people in Florissant, I tell you, you've got a lot of patriots up here. The donations were unbelievable. You helped out a lot of injured Marines and we wanted to thank you. Even the Army guys are real good to us. So we just want to, we got a small little pocket area appreciation for what we can do and we'd love to do anything and all to work with the city of Florissant. Thank all of you, thank one and all of them. That's about it, is that okay? One, you got anything?
That's fine.
Sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ben, would you like to add anything?
I just want to say thank you for participating and I'm glad I saw you in the streets here and Jeff and I, we approached you and we spoke to you all and I'm glad you, hope we will do this again for years to come. I appreciate it, thank you.
Jeff?
Yes, I would like to also thank you to Marine Corps League, I know they do a lot of good and I remember when I was even in the Marines and some of the old timers used to come up and say, when I get out and join, make sure you join the league.
(Inaudible).[418.52][418.52](Laughter).
Right, right, right. But anyway, congratulations, Semper Fi.
I was not a Marine, I was a Navy CEB, but I think that's first cousins to the Marines. Let's gather, let's gather for a photo op.
(Applause). Thank God. Thank you, sir, God bless you.
If anyone would like to speak tonight, they need to fill out a card that's over by the entrance to the chamber. I know we have a couple here already. First on the agenda is Mr. Jerry Zeller.
My name is Jerry Zeller. I live at 1695 Mark Twain Drive. A month ago, the reporter newspaper came out and I read it. I was very disappointed in a couple of things that was in there. One was, the council did turn down the $130,000 for a new truck. That wanted to be replaced by a truck that had 11,000 miles on it. Now, to me, if there was preventative maintenance on that truck, it would not need a brand-new truck for $130,000. Now, that's like getting rid of your car when it's dirty. I never heard of anybody getting rid of a truck with 11,000 miles. The other article that was in there, it upset me. I was a supervisor at General Motors. And when there was a problem with somebody in my department, I called them in the office and I talked to them personally with the door closed. What I read in that newspaper, Mayor, was you actually pinpointed three people that were retired because they were drinking coffee at McDonald's. Now, you ought to be honored of three people that are retired that devote all their time to the city of Florissant when they could be somewhere else doing something else. I think that's a shame when you pinpointed, and it's on television, in the newspaper, that they were drinking coffee at McDonald's. I think they should get a little notarized thing from you or forgiveness of what you said. I'm sure that you have gone out and had coffee with the mayor of Spanish Lake and Hazelwood. You had coffee and nothing is said about it. Now, when those people go out there, I think that's a good thing because it shows the community that they do work together for the city of Florissant. And I would be honored to have those guys working for me and not disgrating them in here or in the newspaper of what they're doing on their own time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Next we have...
How do you say her name? Sheri? Sheri Opich? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sheri Opich and I live in Ward 7. Let me say here, I'm not here to tear down the city of Florissant, but I love the city of Florissant, but it's very irritating and I know that my councilwoman works very hard to keep the property up and everything. But when I drive down Christmas Day and see 75 newspapers down Shawnee, right on Durhakee and up Lynn Meadows laying all over the streets and that, something needs to be fixed. And when I do my lawn every week, from grass sowing season all the way up until Christmas before the snowhead and other people are not keeping up the property, I'm out looking for a house someplace else. My friends that love me say, are you going to be the last person turning the light bulb out of Florissant? We've all moved out of Florissant. I've hung in here in Florissant. I own two houses in Florissant. One my mother lives in and one I live in. I need to consolidate houses and move my mother in. It would be much easier for me not to stay and maintain my property, to move out and build a handicap house. There's elderly people that I take care of in my mom's neighborhood, make sure that their lawns get cut and make sure that their walks are shoveled. In order for them to pay a person to come in and do their lawns and that, they do without food and medicine. Now, if I hear one more time from someone moving in the city of Florissant, I didn't know I didn't get the lawnmower with the house, I can't take it anymore. I'm just hoping that the city may have, when you go get your occupancy permit, that you take maybe an hour course on maintaining a house. A lot of the people that are moving in Florissant do, have never owned a house before. They don't know that you need a lawnmower with the house and you need to do snow removal and you need to clean up your leaves and that. I mean, there needs to be an education program or something. It's just really frustrating, especially when I see the elderly struggling to maintain their houses and then they have a house where the grass has not been cut in seven years. It's hard to me to explain, hey, you need to pay, you know, we'll have the lawn guy come in and it's $25 and maybe they can only afford that once a month on their income. I love the city of Florissant. I've spent my whole life here. My daughter loves the city of Florissant.
Ms. Opich, unfortunately, your three minutes is up.
Yeah. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. Public hearing 14-01-001.
In accord, in accordance with Section 405, 310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 7:00 PM on the following proposition. To authorize an amendment to special use permit number 3282 as amended by ordinance numbers 4985 and 5920 to allow for the additions to an existing shopping center sign for the property located at 737 through 779 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard and who have special needs should contact the city clerk before said, at these five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Is the petitioner here this evening? Please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Paul Schrader with Bianco Properties, located at 680 Craig Road in Creve Court, 63141. I'm here just to answer any questions you might have regarding this request for renovating the pylon sign at Florissant Plaza. It's not changing the existing sign at all, other than freshening up the framework with a new paint and then adding a small arch to the top of the sign.
Mr. Grib?
The other day, I received an email from Mr. Stenit concerning this sign and there was some confusion as to what ward the sign is located in, but it is in Ward 2. So, the ball was handed to me then. I looked at the sign and read the history of the sign and shopping center and I'm pretty familiar with it because I've lived right up the street ever since that shopping center was built. Along history to the sign, it's out there, it's close to the street, it's under a special It's been kept up and now what I think the petitioner wants to do is add a little ornamentation to the top so that it matches the renovation of the buildings in the back, isn't, is that pretty much what it's all about? To do that, the, we'll have to go up another about two feet, maybe two feet and one inch. Normally, ground signs are, as they call them, pylon signs, we used to call them pole signs and even the nomenclature has changed over the years as to what we call these signs, but they are limited by a special permit to 25 feet above grade. And this sign will now be 27 feet and one inches above grade. However, this council can authorize the height extension up to 40 feet if we wanted to. So another two feet is a possibility here if everybody will agree to that. And I think it's a good idea because it will match the new renovations of the buildings in the back, the Petco and Michaels formerly. And I don't have a problem with this. I don't have a problem with three readings to get this going tonight. I know normally, we don't have a public hearing in three readings, but this is such a, I would say, minor technical change to the structure itself that I would prefer to see the petitioner move on, get this thing painted, get it put together, and I think it will help the shopping center, neighborhood, and I think it's all a good deal. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grib. Seeing no one else before I close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, Mr. Grib moves to close the public hearing, second by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have old business, second readings. Bill 8943.
Yes, I wish to excuse myself from this.
Excuse? Mr. Schmidt moves for a second, second by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance to rezone for Missouri CVS Pharmacy LLC, the property located at 1550 and 1500 South New Florissant Road and 1191 Dunn Road from B3 extensive commercial district to B5 planned commercial district to allow for the construction and operation of a drive-through pharmacy, retail sales, medical clinic and liquor sales.
Mr. Egan moves for a third. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance to authorize for Missouri CVS Pharmacy LLC, the property located at 1550 and 1500 South New Florissant Road and 1191 Dunn Road from B3 extensive commercial district to B5 planned commercial district to allow for the construction and operation of a drive-through pharmacy, retail sales, medical clinic and liquor sales.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this?
Happy New Year. Is this, is this here, this ordinance going to be just for the zoning, a rezoning of the property, or is there going to be a public hearing regarding what CVS Caremark or CVS Pharmacy is supposed to, what they're going to do as far as building and their permits and everything? Like MSD?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Hassel, do you want to?
Okay, well, I have one question. And that, the question is, is there going to be an on-guard, or on-duty, security guard, off-duty police officer, on duty from the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM at this pharmacy?
I don't think that was part of the, of the ordinance.
It's not a condition of the ordinance.
No, it's not a condition of the ordinance.
Well, shouldn't it be a part of it? I mean, I'm speaking for the, not only the residents of Florissant, but also the shoppers and the employees of CVS Pharmacy. Because with the close proximity of Interstate 270, there's an exit on Dunn Road, you can get off at Dunn Road, drive one-tenth of a mile, pull in there, they could hold, they could hold them up for pharmaceuticals, take off, go under the overpass, get back on 270 and go eastbound, or they could get on Dunn Road and go westbound on 270.
Mr. Regan?
And I think it would be, it would be an advantage to both CVS and Florissant to have a armed security guard between the hours of 11:00 and 7:00 AM since the close proximity to Interstate 270.
Mr. Regan?
You know, I don't normally want to address questions from the floor in this form, but I will because when we had the Walmart ordinance, I proposed the amendment that required an off-duty Florissant police officer to be at the facility after 11 o'clock and before 7:00 AM. The reason that I did not do that for this project is because we have currently several examples of this type of operation in our 24 hours in the city of Florissant. We've not had any noted trouble, to my knowledge, at the Walgreens, for example. We have many convenience stores that open 24 hours that we don't require a police officer to be present during the overnight hours. I felt, as I explained at the time during the Walmart proposal, that it had some unique circumstances that caused me concern, i.e. they have a sporting goods department that stocks weapons and knives and ammunition and the such. So as far as explaining why I did not propose that and will not propose it for the CVS is because we currently have numerous operations similar in the city that are operating well without that. Thank you.
Can you give me an example of a 24-hour pharmacy that sells pharmaceuticals, that stocks and stores pharmaceuticals that are within a close proximity of maybe two-tenths of a mile from the entrance to the highways, please?
Kevin, I'll talk to you afterwards?
No, afterwards is going to be too late. The thing with this is that we have Walgreens 24-hour store at Lindbergh and Charbonneere, Washington Street. The only thing is, there's no interstate nearby. You know for a fact that First Bank has been held up numerous times because of its location close to the highway. I don't think Circle K or BP or, that Sinclair Station up there, which is a Phillips Station now or Conoco, they were held up before and the robber got away with, on the highway. And so there's one example right there, that was recently. I would like to see an armed guard at this location and it would, and because I don't want to see something happen where somebody, where it's going to be a regret. And if the city council ignores this, then if something happens, it's on your hands. That's all I have to say.
Clerk, please fold the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano? I'm sorry. Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Ordinance 8943, excuse me, Bill 8943 becomes ordinance number 8018. Next on the agenda, we have new business board appointments. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Tanine Hinton of 300 Block of Gerald to another term of the Citizens Participation Committee.
Mr. Caputa, or Mr. Egan moves for approval, second by Mr. Lee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to reappoint Terry Ryder to the Citizens Participation Committee. Mr. Lee moves for approval and I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to reappoint Mr. James Hunt to the Personnel Commission. Mr. Regan moves for approval and I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
That's the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have requests. A request in Ward 9, a request for a full liquor, buy the drink license for the Rice House 2 located at 2725 North Highway 67. Ms. Hernandez moves for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm trying to get your boos quicker than I can, I'm sorry.[1622.01][1622.01](Laughter).
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Rest is a grand, thank you, Mr. Trong. Next on the agenda, we have bills for first reading, Bill 8968.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 3282 as amended to allow for additions to the existing shopping center sign for the property located 377 through 779 North Highway 67.
Mr. Grib?
I'd like to move for a second reading.
Mr. Grib moves for a second, second by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 3282 as amended to allow for additions to the existing shopping center sign for the property located at 737 through 779 North Highway 67.
Mr. Grib moves for a third, second by Ms. Pagano.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 3282 as amended to allow for additions to existing shopping center sign for the property located at 737 through 779 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, clerk, please fold the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Stenit?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grib?
Bill 8968, pardon me, 8968 becomes ordinance number 8019. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is Bill 8969.
Ordinance amending Section 125, 525, 125530 and 125535, political activities by adding an exemption for first responders.
Mr. Egan moves for a second, second by Mr. Grib. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending Section 125, 525, 125530, 125535, political activities by adding an exemption for first responders.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please fold the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
And also, I would like to, Saturday, January twenty-second, or, I'm sorry, January twenty-fifth, at Fort Bell Fountain Park, they're having a, an eagle watch at the park out there. And the World Bird Sanctuary is gonna be out there, and they're gonna have their, their bald eagle out there also, and that's from twelve. The eagle's gonna be from twelve to two o'clock, and the actual, sorry, the thing starts at eleven o'clock, eleven to two PM. So, from twelve to two PM is gonna be the, the actual eagle there from World Bird Sanctuary. So, it should be a nice event, hopefully anybody that likes to do some eagle watching would go to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Egan.
Thank you. My sanity is often being questioned, and this next line might make it questioned even more. Police officers have very special connection to backstoppers, and we also have a very special connection to Special Olympics, it's one of our, our pet projects. And in lieu of that, on February twenty-second, the Maryland Heights Police Department, along with the Hayeswood Police Department, are sponsoring a polar bear plunge at Creve Court Park. And I am here to announce tonight that I am officially going to plunge, and I will be accepting donations from five dollars on up, for those of you who want to see me actually plunge. You can get ahold of me through my email or through my home phone number. I ask you all to think about it. Special Olympics is just really a special, a special organization, and we'll bring in video. Thank you.
There's no, is there any way you could take Farmer Chiefs of Police for, to do this with you, by chance?
I would love to.
What kind of, what, how high would the donation have to be to get you to swim across the lake?
Not that much money.
Let me just say one thing, and I will second that. That is for a great cause with Special Olympics, and I would encourage everyone to turn out. Nothing else, just to see Joe shiver a little bit, but it'd be, it should be a good, a fun time for all.
Thank you, Mr. Stenit. I would like to congratulate Jay Russell and his wife Delphi and their family, and the entire King Clan, for their, celebrating their fifty-eighth year in business at BJ's Bar in beautiful Ward Five at the corner of Washington and St. Ferdinand. They do, do a great job there, and they have some arguably the best pizza in town, and one of my favorite bartenders, Danny Walters, resident of Ward Five, also works there. So, I would like to congratulate the entire Russell family for fifty-eight years in business in the city of Florissant. I would also like to thank Dr. James Coon and Dr. Angela Parr at the Florissant Animal Hospital. We've got a lot of good vets in town, but the Shildroth family had to lose a member of our family on December twenty-third, and Dr. Coon couldn't have been more professional. He, we owe him a lot, and I just can't say enough good things about the Florissant Animal Hospital. And finally, to everybody in the city, would you please consider keeping your car off the street when we have snow? I know it's hard. If you can keep it in the driveway, it would be great, so we can let our, let our street department plow. I know it's difficult sometimes, but it's a lot easier when the guy's got a clear path to plow in the street. I know it's asking a lot sometimes, but sometimes it helps to keep those cars off the street. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. President. We really would appreciate some help when we have a snow emergency, especially like the one that we just had. I'd like to commend our Public Works Department. That storm was a very, very difficult storm because of the very low temperatures. The chemicals don't work at that low of a temperature, so the aftermath of the initial effort to clear the snow did not get us down to pavement. The paths were a little bit narrower than you're used to seeing because there was so much snow and it was so cold. But if you compare the effort that we put forth compared to other communities, we did an excellent job. If, in the event that we have a snowstorm and you cannot get your vehicle off the street, if you would please try to park on the, if you have even an odd, addresses on your streets, to try to just park on the odd, or try to choose one side that's unanimous in your neighborhood, it'd make it, still would make it a lot easier if we had cars only on one side of the street. I'd like to announce that the Florissant Police Department has become a Project Lifesaver Agency. It's the, we're the first police department that's part, project, partnered with Project Lifesaver. We're the first agency in eastern Missouri to have the ability to track Florissant residents who may have a condition of Alzheimer's, autism, Down Syndrome, dementia, or other cognitive conditions. And if you wanna know more about this service, you can call our police department or go to www-projectlifesaver.org, call seven-five-seven-five-four-six-five-five-oh-two. There is a nominal cost, ninety-five dollars to enroll, and twenty-five dollar monthly fee to have an identification on your loved one, so if they somehow wander away from your supervision, that we'd be able to locate them immediately. We had two, we had a promotion in the police department. Mark Pounders, Officer Pounders, was promoted to sergeant, and we hired, had a new hire, Kevin Foddy, as a new hire to, as a police officer to our department. We're very proud to have these two individuals to help continue the tradition of outstanding service that our police department provides. On New Year's Eve, we had a countdown to noon. We did not get a plug from Jay Leno this year, but we did have a great event. We had a full house at the Egan Center, and I'd like to thank the Senior Advisory Commission and Peggy Hogan and the Parks Department for all their help, and also the council members that were bartenders. We had Mr. Gribb and his wife Mary, Joe Egan, Pat Stenit, and Jackie Pagano, no, and Tim Lee. I think Jackie and Keith helped with some of the gifts, but they had other commitments that they couldn't make it that day. We were awarded a park improvement grant, and we're gonna be using that grant, it's gonna be a, total project's gonna be two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars to put new restroom and storage facilities in Bangor Park. This is a, gonna be a, this is part of the one-tenth sales tax to improve, restore, and expand local parks and recreation program facilities. So, we're just glad that our Parks Department was able to obtain that grant. We've been very successful in getting our share of those grants over the years, and this is just another example of the fine work that our Park Department does in that area, in a lot of other areas. The restroom that's at Bangor Park now is in badly need, badly in need of being replaced. In the audience, we have, just happened to have Chuck Barkham with his family. His son is trying to get his Eagle Scout, so this is getting a citizenship award tonight, but Chuck is here, and Chuck's company is generous enough, they're gonna, they have the tree disposal program. If you have a Christmas, a live Christmas tree, the only thing that Chuck asks us to do is if you have a tree that's taller than four feet, that if you would cut it in half. And I guess if it's taller than nine feet, you wanna cut it in thirds, but they can only fit a four-foot-long section into the, into the disposal truck. So, we appreciate Meridian Waste, all the things that you do with the city. We have a great relationship with Meridian. Our new calendars are gonna be starting delivery tomorrow. We would've had it, had them delivered earlier, except for the snowstorm, and we'd like to thank Meridian Waste for sponsoring the calendars again this year. Thank you, Chuck. Thanks for the tree disposal program, and for all the other services that you provide for our citizens. And lastly, Ameren Alert System helps you and your community's manager your accounts. If you would like to get some, if you'd like to help, help with your Ameren account, if you, contact ameren.com/alerts, and on your computer system, you'll get the power update on your area when there's a power outage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will have a council work session on Thursday, January thirty, twenty-third, here at City Hall at seven. Our next meeting is January twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock in City Hall. Mr. Mayor.
On that tree removal disposal system, that, that tree would go out whenever you noticed that your neighbors put out their trash for their yard waste and their recyclables. That would be the same day for that tree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will have a council work session on Thursday, January thirty, twenty-third, here at City Hall at seven. Our next meeting is January twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock in City Hall. Mr. Mayor.
On that tree removal disposal system, that, that tree would go out whenever you noticed that your neighbors put out their trash for their yard waste and their recyclables. That would be the same day for that tree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hernandez moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.